Good evening. We call the meeting of Liberty County Board of Commissioners to order. Mr. Brown has the meeting been properly advertised?
Yes, sir, it has.
Thank you, sir. It has. Good to see everyone to our first meeting of the month. Happy to have you here. Happy to have those persons who are also joining us by way of social media. At this time, we're going to ask Reverend Kendall Page to come and lead us in our invocation and our pledge of allegiance. Please come to the podium, please, sir. Let's stand, please, if you will.
Let us pray. Most holy and righteous God, we come to you today to thank you for life and life more abundantly. Thank you for this county. Thank you for this Board of Commissioners. And we pray, God, that as they use their wisdom, let it be your wisdom, God, that guide them through making decisions for all of us in this county. That all of us, as we're getting, being affected by it, God, let it be in a positive light, Father. We thank you, God, for their wisdom. We pray that they'll work on one accord for this community and that this community will be a beacon of light for other communities, how to conduct business in your name. In Jesus' name we do pray. Amen and amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. We have two commissioners who are at awards program, I think at Liberty County High School. They'll be joining us. For those of you in the audience who have looked at the agenda, there will be one change. Item number, get my eyes right, 6A. The commissions have decided to defer that one to a later date in time. So item number 6A would not be discussed tonight. We were deferring that to a later date and time back a census of the Board of Commissioners. All right. Minutes for April?
I think they've been corrected, Mr. Chairman.
I think they've been corrected.
I make a motion we approve.
Motion second, we approve the April 9th and 18th minutes. Further discussion? All in favor, bow your hands, please. Need everybody. All right. Thank you.
I guess that's true. Enjoy.
Yes, sir, it's true.
Department reports, Public Defender Fiscal Year '25 Budget. How are you, sir?
Well, how are y'all?
Good, good, good.
I guess to briefly kind of summarize this last calendar year, it was very busy. We got a lot done, which is good, not just here in Liberty County, but circuit-wide as well. As you all know, like coming out of COVID, as, you know, for all those years when we were shut down, no cases got done. All of those cases still have to be done, right? And so we're catching up on all of those, and we have made a lot of progress on that. A lot of the recovery money helped. Like, for example, I personally did, I think, four jury trials in this last calendar year. Three in Tannen County and one in Bryan County. All of them were with Arbor Funded Judges, which helped us get caught up on the cases that needed to be resolved. So we've made a lot of progress on that. Also, a happy thing for Liberty County, as of the 16th of this month, I will be fully staffed in Liberty County with attorneys for the first time since before the shutdown or right after shutdown. Largely, just as we came out of COVID, there were more jobs and there were people applying for them, really across the state. It wasn't just a problem for me finding someone to hire, really statewide. And I'm real excited now to have a full attorney staff here in Liberty County. For the last couple of years, I've spent two full-time people and one contractor handling everything. And as of the 16th, there'll be four full-time lawyers, all of whom have had trial experience. The contractor will still be with us until the end of this fiscal year in June. So we've made a lot of progress there. Turning to the budget proposal this year, there is a $95,000 increase we're asking for. About two-thirds of that is actually just to fund a new administrative assistant position I'm seeking. That will allow me to have a full-time administrative assistant in every office that we have. We have our main office here in Liberty County that administers, you know, Superior Court and State Court here. It administers Long County Superior and State Court and the juvenile court for the circuit. And then we have three other offices, one in Bryan, McIntosh, and Tannen County. And so I would like a full-time admin in all of those. And that's, that's good. A lot of the, they've done a real good job this past year, too. There is some money requested to give to administrative employees a pay increase. They've done a lot of work, as everyone has, coming out of COVID, and had a real good disposition about all of it. And both of them are here in Liberty County. A little bit of the increase, it just goes to offset the increased cost of benefits is the main, is the remainder of that. The... As you know, we split it. There are operating expenses. We're asking for those, just really just to remain the same. We're able to operate on the, on the current budget and have for a number of years. Everyone gets an office credit, and since we moved into the new courthouse, when that happened, because of the way the office credit is calculated, it shifted $40,000 approximately of operating expenses from Liberty County to the other five counties in the circuit. And so again, this year and every year that we're in that courthouse, you do realize that savings. We still love it there. Thank you very much. It's a fantastic building to practice law in. It's beautiful. It looks fantastic. It looks brand new still. So we're real happy to be there.
I'm trying to find his number.
I don't have that, I don't have that book here with me, Ms. Chairman. It's, um, he probably has got it on top of his sheet right there.
Hold on a minute, Brenda.
Yes, sir. Let me rotate mine.
Twenty-eight fifty.
Twenty-eight fifty.
Forty-eight fifty.
You get the gold stars. Got it. Okay. Joe, you might want to explain to audience why Brandon is presenting tonight so that everyone will understand.
He is. That, as, as you know, Ms. Chairman, each year we have to send a notification in advance of the state fiscal year, which starts July 1st, to the state that we do intend to, to support the, the budget and fund the budget. So that's, that's why it's called upon you to try to take action on that tonight so it can follow those steps to the Public Defender Council in Atlanta.
Okay, and he is, but it is one of those where the expenses are shared in the circuit?
That is correct.
Just trying to change. Better?
And it is a, as people watching, the state does provide a funding as well that helps the program here locally as well. It's not solely a county-funded iteration. I think right now, I forgot to look before I walked in here, the county, though, I think, might provide more than 50% of the support for the office. That, that kind of changes depending on the year. Sometimes it's more state, other times it's more county. I forgot to let go of my state number as currently, and it just changed. We didn't, I failed to mention, we did get a new Superior Court judge starting this calendar year. And so that added an additional state-funded attorney position as well that would increase the state's contribution to my budget.
Total budget is how much, Mr. Riff?
Me?
For 2025 is $1,445.
That's through the circuit?
Circuit.
That is correct. It's a, a change from last year, but it's $291,000 less.
Less than last year.
According to what we were handed out.
The, the number for last year is incorrect in your materials.
It is?
Yeah, it is, yeah. The, the number for last year changed. I'd, um, I had kind of an initial proposal that we talked about, and then you never actually saw that. And then I changed that proposal. This, this request is actually about $90,000 more than what last year was.
For '25?
Yes, ma'am.
So the main reason for the increase for staff?
Oh, yes, sir. Absolutely. One new position.
And the staff will report to all the attorneys or just you?
No, the full-time admin position will probably be in Bryan County and will support that, that office.
Yeah, that's, that's the second.
I'm sorry. I can tell you.
Bryan County is the second highest.
Case load.
Case load.
Generally, it's second highest population. It may be second highest case load this year, but that's not always the case. Historically, Tannen County will have the second highest case load because of the prisons there.
Oh, yeah, you did say that. You did mention that. Yeah.
But the, there was turnover, and I don't know if y'all went the long story on what happened in Bryan County.
The short version of the long story.
Tornado comes through, wipes out the courthouse. We haven't had an office there in two years. My Bryan County lawyer, Atlanta started paying new lawyers $100,000 a year. He left me to go make $100,000 a year in Atlanta. My administrative assistant there had a family tragedy, and she resigned her position. I staffed the, for a time, I was the Bryan County lawyer filling in, and then I made, we had a part-time admin in Bryan County. I'm sorry, McIntosh County. We made her full-time, and she did both counties. It doesn't really work out, it works out less well than I thought it would because of the distance between McIntosh County and Pembroke is where the courthouse is in Bryan County. It's not in Richmond Hill like a lot of people think. And so I'd like to keep her on full-time in McIntosh and have another position in Bryan County. So that way McIntosh has a full-time position, which they kind of have now, but historically it was part-time. And then keep the full-time position in Bryan County. Bryan County is a very efficient place. I generally can staff that with one full-time admin and a, one lawyer. We do the State Court and the Superior Court there. The State Court's very busy. They, they meet a lot. Superior Court's also, it's still verbus. I mean, it's a, it's a close second when it's second, or a close third when it's third. But it's efficient, but we need, we really need staff, really, just to keep things moving through and make sure everything gets set down for court to keep it going. And, and the administrative assistants, they kind of get lost on the shelf. We don't hear as much about them. As far as keeping everything moving through the calendar, they do a lot of that work on all the unentitled cases. When somebody gets arrested, it's the administrative assistants that actually handle, and the investigative support staff to actually get the applications, track it to see what holds up here in Liberty County, setting them down for their first bond hearing and preliminary hearing in Superior Court, not the first appearance hearing, is waiting for the warrants to get filed with the Superior Court clerk. Once that happens, we know its judge to set it down in front of, and we can't really set anything down until the Superior Court clerk opens their file. And the admins monitor all that so that we schedule people for court at the first available opportunity. So, I mean, they, they just do a whole lot, and it's good to have, you know, full-time staff, because they just keep everything moving. And the lawyers don't have to really worry about, about that, and they can focus on actually preparing the cases, preparing for court, rather than all the procedure that goes on just to keep everybody on a calendar, and the calendars made. If that makes sense. I don't know if that was too much, too little.
Well, I could hear part of it. You might, it's either not all, or I don't, I know anybody in the back of the room been here, but I understood what you was wanting. But, I mean, you wanting some money to hire. But I mean, you wanting some money to hire you an admin person.
Right.
Because the other one left and went to Atlanta for more money? Is that what you said?
The attorney left and went to Atlanta for more money. The full-time administrative assistant we had, she had a family tragedy, and so she resigned her position. I made a part-time person in McIntosh County full-time. Don't go again.
No, 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 go ahead.
Okay. I made the part-time administrative assistant full-time. She'd been with us for a while, and she was doing both McIntosh and Bryan County. And it works, just not very well. It's, it's really turned out to be too much. And the distance between McIntosh County and Pembroke, where the Bryan County courthouse is, it is so far that that was more of a problem than I thought it would be. And so I'd like to have another full-time position, so we can have full-time admins in both McIntosh and in Pembroke. The admins keep a lot of the calendars moving. They schedule most of the bond hearings, preliminary hearings, bond reduction hearings. And that keeps a lot of the unindicted cases moving, so they...
I understood, like I said, that you was wanting somebody.
Yeah.
Now, the funding is going to be, what portion are we, they gonna pay?
Y'all are approximately 40% of the total budget request.
Come at the 40%?
It's based, uh, population, and then a portion of it is based on State Court caseload.
Just State Court caseload, or is it Superior Court?
The Superior Court funding for personnel is based on the population of the different counties, and that's on the U.S. Census numbers, or where we get that from. And then a portion of it, it says in here, is a portion, is how we say that, to the State Court, five or six counties participate in the State Court, and that is done by caseload every year. So the percentage you pay of the money that goes towards State Court changes every year, depending on how many cases we do in State Court the prior calendar year.
He presented this a few days ago. He had to come back and present it again because his budget requires an early approval.
Yes, sir.
Than the other budget, yeah. Any other questions, sir?
No, it just looks like an awful lot of money, but if, if we, if we need to do it to be in compliance, that's one thing, and, um...
And Brendan runs a pretty tight budget.
Well, I understand what, what you're saying about that, Mr. Chairman, that he, I mean, this individual will be hired by you to work the whole circuit, and this person will be a state employee?
Correct. The, the counties, y'all pay a contracting fee, so that all of my county-funded employees are in fact state employees. They get state health benefits, state retirement. That's correct.
All right.
All right. The, uh...
I just think it's been, I guess, I guess it's like changing the tires. You want to make sure you get them changed before you have them flat.
I would point out, too, we actually do, their workload has increased somewhat substantially. We now get a lot of service of discovery electronically now, which is nice, because we can log into the district attorney's website tracker, is what they call it, and print it ourselves. However, prior to doing that, their administrative staff did a lot of that. And so here in the last year or so, when they started implementing this, it has put a much larger burden on my, burden on my administrative staff to create the files as well. So I mean, they've, you know, the situation has changed, but...
All right, so just, I wanted you to follow me here just a minute.
Yes, sir.
You, you get an individual, he goes to court, and he says, "I want a jury trial." "I want you to provide me an attorney." That attorney will come from anywhere in the circuit, or will he come from, where will he come from, if it's, if it's here in Liberty County?
I have four full-time attorneys in Liberty County as of the sixteenth of this month that will do that case.
And then you follow up, see that that person goes to trial? Is that what you do?
Me personally?
Yeah. Who, who does that?
The, I mean, the attorneys handle their own caseloads and largely operate without too much of my supervision. What we make sure they do is they're trained, and we hire people that understand their responsibility to the client. We call that client-centered representation, and you try and advance the client's interest, and we, we train people to do this. The office manager for Liberty County right now, her name is Sharika McKnight. But yeah, no, we, we get this done. I'm not too sure. And the calendar, the cases are on the calendars. They're assigned to different judges. The judges also want to make sure their calendars move. The district attorneys, it's their job to prosecute cases. They also want the cases to move, and so everyone kind of moves it through the processes, and it all goes towards the, the jury trial is the whole thing. Once somebody's been indicted by the government, that's typically a year from the time they're arrested until indictment. That's usually a one-year process. They get the entire statute of limitations, but typically they get it done in a year. And then, once it's indicted, you're on the trial calendar. Your first court date is going to be what we call arraignment. You just walk in there, you plead not guilty, and say you want a jury trial. Typically, we will get discovery at arraignment, and that's not normal everywhere, but it's something our DA's office does. It's very professional. After that, you'll have what we call plea and motion day. It's really a calendar call. It's an opportunity to work out any cases for anybody that wants to go ahead and work those cases out. So usually the ones that are not too difficult to get resolved, get resolved on that day. Then the next one, we call it Rule 20 Day. Uniform Superior Court Rule 20 says that you should have a calendar call before jury selection. We call that calendar call Rule 20, and that's typically the last date to enter a negotiated plea. You can plea after that, but you're just going to have the judge decide your sentence, rather than anything negotiated between you and the state. Anybody that doesn't resolve on Rule 20, unless it's continued for some reason, we would pick a jury shortly after Rule 20, and have the jury trial is kind of the process. If that answers your question, but, I mean, there's a whole, there's a whole bunch of people making sure these cases move. It's not just me. And you, I mean, we...
No, I didn't expect it to be just you. I just, you know, I was on a, I wasn't aware that we had four of them here in Liberty County, public defenders.
Yes, sir.
Who are they?
Sharika McKnight, Jenny Purdy, Mark Anadell, and as of the sixteenth, William Porter, were their names. He actually is a rehire. He worked for me for a year or two before, left and wants to come back, so...
Well, I won't keep you no longer. I just, it's just something I wanted to, to, to talk to you about.
Yes, sir.
Hope you didn't miss the bowl game or anything.
I've got nowhere to be.
All right. Chairman, take a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion that we proceed with funding this.
Second?
Second.
Motion second, we approve the budget request from Circuit Wide Public Defenders, presented by Mr. Brendan. Thank you, sir, for also intervening us.
Absolutely. Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
And for discussion, all in favor, show your hands, please.
Chairman, I'll just thank you.
We do understand.
All I heard was Eddie.
We do understand.
I could hear him, the black one also.
I gotta speak closer to it. I always miss this thing.
Thank you, Mr. Brendan.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate it. Be safe.
LCPC.
Chairman, we will need to go into public hearing for...
Chairman, motion to go out of regular session in the public here?
So move.
Second? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Great. Tonight I have a rezoning petition and conditional use request 2024-027 for the county. A rezoning petition and conditional use request have been submitted by John Roberts, Jr. to rezone 5.69 acres from A1, which is agricultural, to C3 highway commercial, for a truck, trucking terminal with overnight semi-trucking parking. The property is located on E.B. Cooper Highway in the unincorporated area of Liberty County, and the map and parcel number is 108001. This is just showing the notifications of the legal ad in the sign. I don't know if you can tell, but way in the background there is the Long Reach Community sign, to kind of tell you a little bit about where the property is on E.B. Cooper. This is the vicinity map, and also right here is a cleared-out section on E.B. Cooper that is owned by Rayonier, and Mr. Roberts' property, of course, is right where the red triangle is.
Chairman, are you surrounded by Rayonier?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. And the next slide is our zoning map, and as you can see, it's completely all agriculture. It's A1 and AR1 for the zoning. This is just a copy of the plat of the property. I'm going to have to, this is, would be the E.B. Cooper side. And there is a small amount of wetlands right here. It's less than a acre, probably about .78 of an acre. There is a small amount of wetlands on the property. I'll do my best to explain the sketch here, and Mr. Roberts is here. He can help me out if I need it. But anyway, it's just going to be a ramp coming off of E.B. Cooper. There would be, there's seven truck parking spaces here, about 200 feet long, 20 feet wide. It will be fenced, and it will have some type of lighting. And we'll get into the zoning analysis. Does this property have reasonable economic value? It's currently zoned. Yes, it does. Does the property conform with the J-LUS study? It does. Does the proposed use conform to the Liberty County Comp Plan? The Comp Plan designates this property as agricultural forestry. Will there be an adverse effect on the value and usability of nearby properties? Possibly. Is the proposed use suitable in view of nearby uses? No, it is not. Will the zoning proposal create an undue burden on transportation, including streets, transit, and schools, utilities, and the provision of public safety? No, it would not. Would this allow a short-term gain at the expense of the local long-term goals? Yes. Would the change, excuse me, would this change cause domino effect or encourage sprawl? Possibly. Are there any unique historical sites which may be adversely impacted? No, there's none noted. Is the parcel in a flood zone? It is not. Is the spot zoning, is it spot zoning and unrelated to the existing pattern of development? Yes, it is. Are there any unique conditions which support approval or denial? No, there is not. And I'll go into the conditional uses as well. The use shall not adversely affect the economic value or physical appearance of the neighborhood or areas surrounded, the site or lot in question. If allowed, adequate buffers would be required. The use shall be consistent with the Comp Plan and with the purpose and intent of the land use district. No, this property is designated as agricultural forestry, like I stated in the rezoning analysis. The establishment, maintenance, or operation of you shall not be detrimental to or endanger the public health, safety, or of the general welfare. No, it would not. The use would not create an undue burden on transportation, including streets, transit, schools, utilities, or the provision of public safety. No, it would not. The design shall minimize adverse physical environmental effects on adjacent properties, including adverse visual effects. Buffer zones, where necessary, to show any adverse factor shall be considered. If allowed, again, adequate buffers would be required. Additional space for parking, landscaping, and adequate measures for ingress and egress shall be considered, if necessary, to protect adjacent structures or lots from any adverse impact. A GDOT commercial driveway would be required. And on this, the LCPC, LCPC recommendation disapproval. Have any more questions? Mr. Roberts is here as well.
Did this approval surprise me?
Does it surprise you?
It, it surprised me.
Oh, it surprised you?
Yes, sir.
What was the vote on that?
I think it was unanimous. I don't know. I don't know. I'd have to look at the, the minutes.
What were their concerns?
Mainly because it's strictly just all agricultural, and it doesn't meet the Comp Plan, and it's spot zoning was mainly the, the reason.
The Comp Plan is under review as we speak.
Yes, sir.
And we all do know that there are some other projects, if I may use that word, that are going on on, on E.B. Cooper, especially as you get into more toward Riceboro.
Yes, sir.
And this is a truck parking lot that's out and surrounded by unit camp, all timber on all, every side of it and the highway entrance.
Right.
Have I got it right?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Stevens was trying to get a feel for us. It, where's the closest house?
There are a few mobile homes right in this area, right here, but other than that, it would be on up E.B. Cooper.
Yeah, and six or seven trucking, one, two, three, four, five, six spots?
Yes, sir. He may do more. I guess once he gets it in there, he's just trying to, I guess, has that land and wants to do something with it.
What's the opposition from neighboring property owners?
No, sir.
Is there anyone here, well, Mr. Roberts, you come first, I guess.
Come on up, John.
What we're going to do is that you, come on, it's just to hear your voice about, she, she presented it, but nothing like hearing from the horse's mouth, I just say about what your plans are for that. I mean, we don't need a long speech, but just in brief.
We thank, we thank you for having me. Basically, that, like, that property right there is surrounded by the Roberts estate. That's my grandpa. They're all around that, and it's new houses except one house and two trailers. That's about 24 acres across the street and about five and a half where I, where I was born and raised. And what I really wanted to do, I saw where the, a lot of time people ask me for a parking spot, and I say, "I thought that was, that would be a good idea to fix a place for the guys, like, park on the weekend and thing, something like that." And I just had some problem, and I thought that, that's what I would like to do. But it don't, it don't surround nobody. They'll act, and that's basically it.
Now, I guess in all fairness, are you starting with six spots headed to 50?
Well, I'll, well, I'll be honest about it. I want to see how it's going to grow.
Test it.
Yeah. It might work and it might not.
If he wanted to expand it, would he have to come back to us? I, I know would the rezoning allow him to expand it to? Yeah, okay, okay. Chris Stevens.
Brother Roberts. Since 119 is a state highway, do you think you might see that there could possibly be a D cell lane?
Yeah, it may. I would have to check with the state on that.
Yeah, but have they recommended, have they mentioned anything about possibly putting in a D cell lane sometime on state highway? They don't, they don't recommend.
I am checking as far as I've been, been seeking to have it zoned, and, but that's what I would have to do.
Okay. Can I do this? Larry, you mentioned a, what kind of ramp did you call it? A...
The GDOT would have to, would have to approve a driveway offer there.
Right. You used the word like a GDOT-approved ramp.
Yes, sir.
So, so, so you hadn't spoken with GDOT yet about that ramp? This is, okay, okay. So when he, here, so when he approaches them, that's when that will be conversation?
As part, as part of his application process, he'll have to make an application to GDOT. He'll have to include a site plan, give them a truck count, and then they'll, and he'll have to present them a design, actually, on that, on what he plans to do there.
All right.
Just the driveway permit.
Got it. Okay, all right, okay.
Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry. Go, go ahead, go ahead.
I just, I mean, I understand what he wants to put there, but he may not be able to put it there. But the rezoning is what we need to be looking at, right?
Right.
Okay, what is the rezoning to?
C3.
C3.
Yes, sir.
And that, and that is?
Highway commercial.
Commercial.
If he, I mean, the parking spots that I see in there, let's just say somebody wants to park a log truck in there, John, he's going to have to make a pretty good turn and get in. The other thing is, is what the other commissioners have mentioned about the, you know, the, the D cell lane or whatever, but there, with that road being a trucking route, they, they may ask you to put, they may have to put a turning lane in there, because you, there'll be trucks wanting to turn in. So I, I understand what you want to try to do, because you, you're out here, just like everybody else, trying to make ends meet, lay a block, lay a brick, trying to further, but the, you know, as far as the zoning, I guess that's something we need to determine, and what you put on it will have to be approved probably at a later time. Am I correct, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
It, I mean, I see what his plan is, but this is a rezoning more than anything.
It is, right.
That's right. Are you ready for a motion?
Yeah, we, we... I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, thank you so much. Apologize about my tardiness. I guess Commissioner Gillard, because of seniority, he was able to, to give his presentation prior to me.
We gave you...
There you go, and he left me. He didn't even ask for a, a ride either.
I left walking.
There we go. There we go. But, but I have had an opportunity to review this and I just have a few questions, I guess, for, for the zoning purposes. We, I know you all have a list of questions that you all present to us.
Yes, sir.
And there's a couple of questions on here that I have some questions about or concern. Of course, you know, number one, simple, does the property have reasonable economic value as currently zoned? I understand that, yes, yes. But one of mine, and it's always been my concern, not just with this particular project, but all projects, whenever we start talking about sprawl and also about spot zoning, can you kind of elaborate a little bit more in detail about the answers from the LCPC with those? Because for, like prime example number four, I don't know if we could go to that, Michael, the question is, will there be an adverse effect on the value and usability of nearby properties? The question, I mean, the answer was possibly. That's kind of, that's, that's kind of a short answer for a long question.
Yeah, well, the adverse effect, we were just thinking possibly about the noise and what kind of lighting he would put up for the, even though there's not many property owners right across the street, there is a home and like he said, you know, a couple trailers there.
Right.
So that's what we were.
But they were not in opposition, if I heard you right.
Pardon me?
They were not in opposition, if I heard you correctly.
No, sir, they were not. We didn't have any opposition.
Okay. And then we could go to number eight. And this is the question that I, I really have concern about, you know, we're dealing with real estate. Would this change cause a domino effect and encourage sprawl? And that answer is possibly.
Yeah. Well, again, just if, if you guys were to approve the C3 zoning, somebody else could, could come in and ask for the same thing. Again, we are in the middle of redoing the Comp Plan, you know, but it's, right now, it's just zoned for all, for agricultural.
And I'm glad you said that, Ms. Chair. You know how I feel about this Comp Plan and I think we've talked about it numerous times. I understand, we, we look at this Comp Plan, we, we review it every 10 years and I know we, we make updates to it. But my concern is, and, and not just with this gentleman here, it's nothing, I'm just talking about overall. We talk about this Comp Plan, we're supposed to stick to this Comp Plan, but then we never stick to it, never. And, and what I'm saying is, is are, are we even doing our part right? I mean, from LCPC to all the, all the parties involved, are we really truly looking at this from economic standpoint? And I, I just don't understand because I, and I know the definition of what a sprawl is and I, I know these definitions from, from a real estate standpoint. And, you know, and even on here with number five, it talks about if allowed, adequate buffering should be required. Is, is that something that we looked at? Or number six, where it says G-DOT, commercial driveway permit would be required. And, and, and I hear, I hear what Commissioner Walden was saying as well and I get it, this is only a rezoning. But maybe I might be missing something, but normally when people come through with a rezoning, that's the last time we see them. I, I don't fairly remember too many people coming after rezoning, that, that they come back in front of us and, and ask what they can and what they cannot put on, on that. Not in front of us. They might come in front of LCPC, but am I wrong?
Unless, well, unless there's a, like a special condition that you put on it that only if this was rezoned to C3, that the only thing that could go there would be truck parking, something like that. I don't know if I've really answered your question, but.
We've done that before too. Yeah. But, uh...
And I mean, and are we putting the cart before the horse? It's, it's just questions about this and.
Are you saying maybe the LCPC should look at the questions?
Yes.
These questions are, you know.
Absolutely.
Same questions.
It's redundant. And then, and then like the, the question, like prime example, we're looking at number eight, right? And it says, would this change cause a domino effect and, and encourage sprawl? I mean, if, if, if you can, I guess to, to the public, can you define what domino effect is and what sprawl?
Well, it's sort of the, the same thing.
Right.
Said it could cause somebody else to come in and want to rezone more commercial in that area.
Right. And I know in the past, wasn't it like, like, like rezoning for like sprawl and, and spot zoning? Wasn't that kind of like a gray line? With spot zoning, changing zoning? Say for instance, like if, if it's a residential area, you put commercial right in, in, in the middle of it. I, I thought, you know, from the state standpoint, that was frowned about, correct?
That would be considered.
So that's spot zoning, correct?
Yes, sir.
And, and I think in this question, you were saying that this is spot zoning, correct?
Yes, sir, it would be.
I was, I was just trying to get clarification.
Well, my, my, my reason I ask, John, is, is, I mean, you've got 5.69 acres. And John, if you open it up and it's fenced and it's lit up 24 hours a day or at least at nighttime, and you say, I'm not, I'm not going to be able to make it like this, and somebody comes by and says, Mr. Roberts, I want to buy this piece of property from you and it, and we're gonna put a gas station and a convenience store there. I don't believe we'd be having this discussion. I believe we'd be saying, we've rezoned. So right now, it's agriculture and you want it rezoned to commercial. You might tomorrow to make your mind up, you don't want to, you might want to put your block business out there, but my thing is, is it's the rezoning. And that's all I think we need to be concerned with. That's me personally. Y'all want to hash it around and kick the can down the road, but I say this.
Mr. Chair.
This is Mark.
Yes, sir.
Let me say this, we've always been talking about trucks parking side of the roads.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
In front of, in subdivisions. Church parking lots, people can't get to church on Sunday. And I think this is a possibly a start. I know he has a long ways to go, but like you said, this is just a rezoning. And I think if Mr. Roberts is capable enough to realize when he gets to a certain point, if he can't do it, he knows what to do best.
And again, Mr. Chair, let, let me make this statement once again. I'm not against this project. I'm not against Mr. Roberts. I'm talking about when we discuss our comprehensive plan. And the question is that the zoning analysis that are presented, with all due respect, I just think it needs to be looked into. You know, I mean.
What, kind of made this recommendation?
Yes, sir.
The LCPC has a board of commissioners?
I would like to say too, in C3 zoning, any kind of truck terminal business is considered a conditional use, which needs additional approval by the governing board. So, you know, if it wasn't a truck terminal that he wanted to do, it would just be a rezoning. But under the ordinance, in C3, any kind of truck, project of any kind has to have the conditional use with it.
That's right. But, but Commissioner Frager trying to follow you, your, your concerns, and you have called it out before, I would suggest you get on the LCPC Board of Commissioners agenda and present, just what you just said to them, for them to look at their, their questions.
Okay.
To revise their questions.
I can definitely.
Do you have a board of commissioners that?
Bring in Mr. Richardson.
Yeah, matter of fact, they sit in our chairs and I can always tell because my, my seat is lower or higher, but yeah.
Yeah.
Right. And like I said, it's, it's, it's nothing against this project. It's, I'm just looking at the questions that, that we're presented with and the answers that we get. I mean, possibly? Possibly what? I mean, I, I don't understand. And then, just like the question that I asked about spot zoning, you know, from my research, I, I always thought that spot zoning was frowned upon, correct? With, with zoning? So is that a yes?
Yes.
Okay. This is for the record, just wanted y'all to know.
It's not exclusive though.
But they deny, they, they disproved it.
Man, Google is, is amazing, I promise you.
Chair, you ready for a motion?
Yes, sir.
Chair, I make a motion that we approve this rezoning and rezoning for truck parking only.
Second.
Motion second, approve the rezoning petition with the special conditions for truck parking only. Mr. Roberts, are you understanding what we're saying, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay. For the discussion. But just, just one question. Commissioner Frager, your point's well taken.
Yeah. Just now the, the disapproval, there were no, no one at the meeting.
No, sir.
No neighbors, no, nobody.
No opposition.
And the disapproval came from the, the LCPC board.
Okay.
Commissioners recommend.
You don't remember what the, what the vote was? It's seven, is it seven-member board?
Yes, sir. I, I don't, I can get you the information.
No, 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 that's fine. I was just wondering, oh, what, what was they thinking? Because it's obvious this board here has a final say, but, but it's a different mindset. I just don't quite understand, you know, how we could be that far, far off, but that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
And Commissioner Gillard, I, I think that's what I was saying. You know, whenever it comes down to it, whenever it's a disapproval, I think we need to be more in tune on the reasoning or even with approvals, you know? It's, it's just like, it's kind of, okay, this is it and I, I don't, I don't know.
But Joey has, what's the word, sometimes reminded me that why the, the boards are autonomous, is that the word?
Autonomous of each other.
So that we can have our own, they have their process and their thinking process. When we come here, we hear it with our process, so that may not be identical.
No, I, I, I wasn't saying that, that, that we, that we all need to be on the same page, but I was just wondering if it was, if it's a seven-member board and if it was five, two.
Strong, a strong vote, right.
Yeah, yeah.
I understand very well.
But if, let's say without knowing the numbers, if all of them said no, and it looked like right now that the majority of us is gonna say something totally opposite.
And that, that happened from time to time.
Yeah, well, yeah, and, and, but, but we're, we're all looking at the same thing.
Yeah, and I didn't know.
Yeah, Ms. Wiggins used to send us their minutes or we would get their minutes.
Yeah, we used to. We don't get a real receiver manual.
Yeah, sometimes Kelly emails us the minutes.
Yeah, we can.
And then, again, Mr. Roberts, it's nothing against you. It's, it's just, it's just about the entire process. In my opinion, I think we just need to reevaluate. That's it.
I'd like to say one thing, but life, business is business, I understand.
Yes, sir.
Quite well.
Right.
And I thank you.
Appreciate it.
All in favor of the motion that was presented, show of hands, please. Opposition, motion passed. Mr. Roberts, you do understand you have more homework to do.
Laura, just as a note, that, that, I, I know that those, it, it is allowed as a conditional use in a C3, but I think their motion was to make it, was to put a stipulation on the rezoning that only truck, this will be allowed. So if anything else in a C3 zone normally approved, would have to come back again. Okay.
Thank you. All right. Final plat, Alder Grove, Phase 1B.
Mr. Chairman, can we have a motion to go back?
Motion to go back into regular session?
Some move, Mr. Chair.
Second, all in your favor, show of hands. Back to the record, thank you, Mr. Brown.
Good evening, Commissioners. I am here to present the Alder Grove final plat for Phase 1B. This is a Dryden Enterprises project designed by Emmy Sac Engineering. This second part to the Phase 1 is 56 lots for single-family homes on 11.21 acres located on Isle of White Road. What's outlined in red here is the total parcel owned by Dryden Enterprises. Isle of White Road is here and this is Oglethorpe, of course. And this is the portion that's being platted for Phase 1B. There are a total of, as I mentioned, 56 lots. All these lots in this area were done in Phase 1A, as were the surrounding detention and wetland areas. So other than these two parcels right here, they're all single-family home lots. The second sheet of this final plat is just the signature pages, signatures pages. As I mentioned, these are the only two parcels that are being dedicated. They are drainage ponds and there are drainage easements that are in favor of the county for the functional maintenance of the drainage ponds. They are being dedicated to the HOA, which will have the general maintenance responsibilities, mowing the, the, around the ponds and that sort of thing. And then there are two drainage easements here also for the culverts that were constructed in this phase. Again, those drainage easements being dedicated to the, the county. Additional dedications include about a third of a mile of new streets and the stormwater improvements and drainage easements that I just mentioned. And the dedication to the HOA are those two detention areas, which about a two and a quarter acre, oh, I'm sorry, one and a quarter acres total. As you probably already know, that this property is an unincorporated Liberty County, but the water and sewer services are provided by the city of Midway. And the extensions of those services are dedicated to the city, so you don't have to worry about any of that. They will be, those dedications will be before this Midway City Council next week for acceptance of those dedications. The stormwater improvements are complete and the remaining improvements are guaranteed by letters of credit. And we also do have in hand, or the county has in hand, the two-year required maintenance bond for the improvements. As you know, the final plats don't go before the planning commission anymore, as long as there are no major changes between the preliminary and the final plat. So this is just an LCPC staff recommendation that the final plat for Alder Grove, Phase 1B, be approved and that the dedications be accepted with standard conditions.
Yeah.
Yes.
Go back to what always is being dedicated to the county.
Sure.
And the HOA.
So basically, these, the light blue lots right here, those are drainage areas, those are, the land itself is being dedicated to the HOA. It's about 1.2 acres total for both of them.
Okay, hold up. Right there, how's the HOA going to maintain that?
It is a funded HOA, so there will be HOA dues. So they will have the money, they'll be taking in the money from the property owners to hire landscaping or whoever they need to, to probably once, maybe twice a year, go in and mow it. That's basically all that's required for the ponds as far as the general maintenance it goes. Mm-hmm.
Okay, so if one family moves in and another family moves, no, one family moves out, another one move in and they don't want to become a part of the HOA?
They have no choice.
They have no choice.
They have no choice. It's in, when they, when they, their deed includes that they have to abide by the, there are covenants on the property, they have no choice and they know that, I mean, they're given the covenants and they agree to abide by them and I do, I mean, I live in a subdivision with an HOA and I know if you don't pay, that they put a lien on your property. They have that ability to do that, so they collect their money.
Okay.
I believe that's what is behind the Parkers in Flemington, all of that new area in there is HOA.
Correct Tranquil South? Yes, sir. Mm-hmm.
Kind of get a witness.
Yeah. Then the other dedications that you're asking about, these are culverts that go to the pond that was constructed in the last phase. So those are also drainage easements for, that are being dedicated to the county.
So how many lots right now are we looking at that, that we're going, you gonna start construction on?
56. 56? Mm-hmm. And I believe there are about 86 or so in the last phase. I'm looking at the engineer from Emmy Sac. I think it was in, in that ballpark, 85, 86 or so. Yeah.
And Mr. Chair, will, will these streets that are dedicated to us, will Trent and his team look at them and verify them, make sure that they have the standard before we take over?
The HOA are maintaining the?
Well, here it says dedicated since to the county. Buckham Drive and Holland.
The chair will have to sign up for them then.
Yes. So the, yeah, so Trent, Tiara Long Engineering did look at all the improvements. He, he reviewed the, the record drawings and everything else and said everything's good to go. So then the, then the process of final acceptance of the streets is, I think you have a different process than the other municipalities. I think you wait the two years and make sure everything's still good before you officially take over maintenance of the streets.
Okay.
I, I could be wrong about that, but I think how the process goes. I, I could be wrong about that, but I think how the process goes, yeah.
There's a process. Go ahead, Laurie. All right. Done?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir. This, this, who here, is this yours?
Yeah.
All right.
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion that we go ahead and accept the final plat for Alders Grove Phase 1B.
Second.
Motion to second, we approve the Alder Grove Phase 1B plat, final plat is presented by LCPC. Any further discussion? All in favor, show your hands, please.
One abstention.
All right, motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chairman.
Since we just, we're looking at this project, I will reiterate that we need to look at the convenience center down in that area because this is going to have an additional impact on that and that roadway coming out as soon as possible.
You presenting, Mr. Brown?
Okay, sir.
Yes, sir, I was, I was gonna mention that, Mr. Long and I had that conversation, in fact, last week when we were going over projects. Because I know y'all have brought that up at your regular meeting too, so.
Date fund request? Give the Boys and Girls Club.
Yes, sir, I believe you have a copy of that in front of you there. Their dollar amount requested out of the date funds was $30,000. However, there's not that much money in there. There's a policy that the board adopted actually in 2015 that designates that each quarter 75% of those funds go to the accountability courts to help offset those expenses. So actually, the amount of money that's there for disbursement after those quarterly dispersments is about $10,000. I will let you know that when I was checking on this this afternoon and gathering up this policy, we do have another request that was submitted. You don't have it in front of you because it just came in today from the Frazier Center and it was for $5,000. The policies generally says that an agency can request funds from, from the source one time a year and that they shall not exceed $5,000. It does offer some flexibility to the board to increase that amount if, if they see fit in order to accomplish the program goals, but in general, it's supposed to be $5,000 a year.
So, Mr. Brown, the Boys and Girls Club does meet the criteria of the date fund?
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am, they do. They, they're actually applying, I won't read it to you, but under their Smart Moves program, it's in there for youth.
So we can, I guess, divide it five thousand apiece?
You could, yes, ma'am, if that's the desire of the board. The Frazier, the Frazier app, or you can act on it tonight, but I'd rather you have a copy in front of you to look at before you do, so I can put that on the mid-month for you.
Because I remember, well, I'm sorry, Commissioner.
Should we hold back on both of them or just the Frazier?
No, I just think the Frazier's fine. I mean, I think, yes, ma'am, it meets the program goals.
Aye, thank you.
Because we, we put that in place so we can make sure that all, I guess, all the programs have an opportunity to, to get some, right?
And no one program can monopolize the.
Right, yeah.
And then you did do the 75% spinoff for those other accountability courts because instead of the general fund trying to fund the majority of those, this money that is collected for those purposes helps to do that.
So basically, we need a motion for 5,000.
5,000, right.
Right. Mr. Chairman, I, I want to make the motion that, that the applicant for Liberty County Boys and Girls Club have an opportunity to receive $5,000 from our date fund.
Second.
Motion to second, we approve $5,000, I call it a grant for the Liberty County Boys and Girls Club. Any further discussion? All in favor, show your hands, please. Happy to help them out.
Yes, sir.
You said you're, you're gonna wait till the Frazier Center approaches?
No, sir, they, they submitted an application, but when I was, I was handed it like, like at 5:30 this afternoon.
Mid-month meeting.
And I'd, yes, sir, I'll make that for you mid-month if that's okay, so that you've got a copy of the application for you.
Let me ask a question here. How many boys and girls clubs do we have?
Just that one.
One, one here. One here in Liberty County.
Is that what it is, just the one?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, I know when Ms. Kitchens was in here the other night, she was.
That's the one?
Do his presenting for, now she's a board member.
That's the one?
Kind of worth the wait. He was the face of.
She's a board member.
Resolution, American Capital Financial?
Yes, sir, sometime back you approved the purchase of a dump truck for the road department. This is to do the financing on that through them. That total amount financed will be 123,638.40. And Mr. Wells said he certainly would approve it, certainly would appreciate it if you approved the financing so he can use the truck.
You didn't make him come?
I did not.
I seen him out there on the side of the road because he thought the truck fell off the truck.
I make a motion for approval of the dump truck for the road department.
Welcome.
Financing.
Second, we approve that financing, any further discussion? All in favor, show your hands, please. Resolution is approved. Thank you, sir. Summer food bids, is that Mr. Mosley?
Yes, sir. Chairman, members of the board, we put out a proposal for a contract to provide food for the Liberty County Summit Foods Program. We did not get any bids. So Ms. Nichelle did contact some more people. What we have before you is a proposal by, what's, what's the name? I saw it earlier, US Foods, to provide food. Now, what this does is unlike our past contracts where the provider prepared the food and delivered the food, what this would do would be for food only and delivery. Our challenge is, according to the guidelines, is finding a certified place to be able to prepare the food. Most of the food is prepackaged, but some of the sandwiches like peanut butter and bologna and ham sandwiches would have to be prepared at a site. But this is for food provision only.
Any questions, Mr. Mosley, about the bid?
I'm assuming that was the only bid, right?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Yep.
One question, Mr. Chairman, is that, I mean, it's just one bid, is this kind of aligned with what we were, what the budget is?
We budgeted 55,000.
Okay.
Good job.
Chairman, take the motion.
Some move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, show your hand. Mr. Mosley, you may as well, while you're here, explain your challenge.
The challenge is making sure that we find a, a certified kitchen to, to put everything together. It won't be any cooking, it'll just be simply putting the sandwiches together, that's the challenge.
The department requires a certified kitchen.
It's a certified kitchen, meat all, health requirements.
Couldn't use staff or park or nothing like that?
No.
James Brown Kitchen area, no, okay.
Not certified.
Don't know, but the, I mean, the problem there is you got the, the summer program going on, the summer day camp too going on, so trying to stage all that could be a challenge.
I've got one question.
How about these, the churches? Ever?
I don't think they're certified or.
I don't know.
I don't think that they're.
It's certified in commercial one, the same with it.
I think she has approached a couple of churches about it, but I don't think there's been, I don't think they're certified.
I don't think they're inspected by the health department, their kitchens.
How about the schools?
Got one, we got one I can possibly check on tomorrow and see if I can squeeze that one out.
Commissioner Gill, she did approach the director of the food program at the, at the school about some assistance and that was a no-go.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Some, some, sometimes it's, it's the message, not the message.
You don't have any?
No, they just do, teach culinary to the, to the students. You know, I don't, I don't know about whether their space would be considered certified or not, I can check.
Well, I mean, I, I was just thinking, and I, I notice sometimes there's culinary, you know, folks on TV that they went to Savannah Tech and I know we've got the campus here, they may offer to help us.
But you know what, that's at LCCA though. So, so.
Their culinary is at the Korea Academy, not at the Savannah Tech campus.
That's right.
Which is part of the school system.
And, and, and you say in the school system? I, I, I talked to you after the meeting. Okay. Seriously, I mean.
It may become a liability.
Commissioner, Stevie's gonna look at a resource, we're gonna check one other one in town.
Yes, sir.
And I just want, I'm, I'm just thinking, when they say certified, how deep is that word?
It may need to have a.
Commercial kitchen or?
A grade in the frame.
No.
Right, we're, we're not cooking, disassembly, yes, sir.
But my understanding needs to be, what's the word?
Sanitary.
Sanitary, yeah.
But.
But if you're not really cooking.
Like they could get a food truck and.
We don't make the rules, but.
They'll probably get tired, Chick-fil-A also.
But please share the resources with Mr. Mosley.
Yeah.
Because if we don't have that, then we, the program cannot go forward.
That, that's kind of difficult for me to understand that, that the school board wouldn't be on, on board with this. So I, I don't know who she spoke with, but.
I can believe they weren't.
It's, it's, it's always somebody higher, and let me just say that without saying it.
Maybe they're listening.
Yeah, hopefully they are, yeah. I'm about to send some text messages out right now.
Ordinance fire plan review.
Yes, sir, this is for information only tonight. As you know, we've got the fire, new fire marshal on board and there's the need for commercial establishments and industrial establishments to be inspected and have plans reviewed. We've been doing that really at no cost to this point because we didn't have an ordinance in place. So this, this is for your review tonight, for us to hopefully take some action on in mid-month. Be glad to answer any questions you have between now and then about it. Pretty simply laid out, won't go through the whole thing with you. It talks about the review, it talks about the square footage charge. Businesses would pay for that review. It does give up to three inspections related to those charges. And then you would see on the subsequent pages where follow-up inspections obviously would be at, at more cost to do that. But again, pretty simply laid out. It also has some other type inspections that come up from time to time that we have to do by law. I just ask that you take a, take a look at it between now and mid-month and I'm know if you got any questions. Definitely need to go ahead and get this in place. They're doing a lot of reviews right now and a lot of inspections right now. So very, very time consuming.
What comparative source, resource did you, did you use to?
Great question. A combination of Chatham, Glen, Camden, Glen, Bullock, all those in our area, and Bryan. And this is really the fire safety code that most adopt, so it's, it's kind of like a state standard anyway, so it's excerpts from it.
If you all remember, we had, when was that, maybe a year and so much ago, we had a commercial establishment that were in unincorporated Liberty County that we were not able to provide inspections and citizens were in those commercial places every day. And we felt that we need to have inspections done, so.
So this is a first step to that. This is actually plan review for new construction. And then the next thing we move into is, is some kind of permitting for annual inspections for businesses. Probably first year being, being free, working into that. But this is plan review, basically, plan review and new construction.
George. So this will connect the building inspection and fire department together?
Yes, sir, and they've been practicing that recently, especially since, since Charles is here. I've been working real, real good together. But basically, the building department does their plan reviews, they'll issue a CO or temporary CO for a building construction. The fire will be separate, it'll have its own fire plan review and it will do the same when the time's right.
I guess, how will the two of them know that this is done, or this is done over here? Will they, how, how will that bridge be put together?
Good question. So just like with development plans in other areas now, a, a separate plan set is required to be submitted by those businesses or industrial clients through the building and licensing department. That's where the distribution point is and that's where the final COs come out of. So they are not allowed to issue any final COs or energize the buildings until they, they have both satisfied.
George, we end that same thought process there. What about, at, at what time does the state come in here and do their, let's just say our person passes it? Now, I know as far as occupancy, motels and stuff like that, you know, the state will have to come in and, and do their own inspection too, won't they?
Well, some of those things, but, but mostly since he's a certified inspector, he performs the duties of the state, so the state doesn't have, they don't have to wait on the state to come in.
Yuri, go back there and acclimate me, so. Because I was thinking, I won't call the name of the business, but there's a few building in rural areas now, so that'd be the next step. What, what do we have now that we can apply this to? What, what establishments? Give me an example, if you will.
Well, again, it's new construction, so right now he's reviewing plans, they're both reviewing plans for industrial buildings that are coming online. We're also doing some preliminary review for restaurants that are being built that aren't in the city of Hinesville because the other municipalities don't have that ability to do it. So again, it's, it's industrial and commercial new construction.
So, so basically, any of those things outside of the city of Hinesville, basically?
Correct, correct. In fact, he, he did, he had to issue the CO for the new fire station. It had to have a, a state stamp on it. So he issued the temporary CO for it.
Okay, all right. So when the new loves come?
He's already been looking at the plans for loves. Yes, sir.
So the plans for love is gonna go by for zero?
No, I don't think, they haven't formally made a submission. They, there's something in the building code, obviously, that, that lets you do a preliminary review. You pay separate for it and that's before they go to final design and final review. Is, they just want to basically know that they got all the eggs that they need in the basket before they put the design on them, if you will. And so I know that's, but they've been going through some preliminary review now.
Okay, all right. So you want us to bring this back?
Again, just for information tonight, we wanted you to be able to look at it and.
Black Commissioner Gill, are these numbers gonna change? All right, we'll look at it. Moving to right there, direction.
All right, infection, inspection, excuse me, fee schedule.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, you have before you a proposal for increasing our different fees associated with building and development. It was presented to you guys. We made a couple of adjustments, some, in some areas, some areas we adjusted down and some areas we adjusted up. But as Mr. Brown stated, it's for your review and we are available to answer any questions that you may have. As Mr. Brown noted, we did use some communities in the coastal area to kind of see where we were and we were pretty competitive within their prices. Some communities, it was just kind of egregious in terms of the, the fees they charged. But we are, we're competitive and within, we're within what they're charging in the region.
Not, not by name, but the communities that were egregious, are they in the coastal, any of them in the coastal?
Yes, sir.
Well, but is it because of the growth and, and, and passing on that cost so the citizens have to bear the cost of all this?
Yes, sir, the, the BVD method that we talk about in there, that's based on the total cost of construction. Those are communities that you mentioned with all the growth, their, their construction is a lot bigger. So, yes, sir.
Mr. Mosley.
Yes, sir.
I'm looking at this and I've always had concerns about we have some individual who comes to Liberty County and go out and do what they want without a permit. Where's that fee at? What I'm saying, charging for, after they get caught.
One of the things, one of the things, recommendation from the building department is charge them twice the building permit.
And what is that fee, I'm looking for it?
You would see, based upon the single family or commercials or whatever it is.
Kind of structured.
Whatever the structure is, they would charge.
Double, right.
They charge for double the fee is what they're, what they shared with me during this process.
And what if they're at a point where they've already passed something that should have been inspected? How, how can we look at that?
Y'all could put a stop work order on it and take it through the match treatment, sir.
Yes, that's correct.
This is the sheriff in town. I just wanted to say that. Most time when it's done, though, it's done and then, then it's picked up or someone will. Yes, ma'am. Say something. So you can't make them, maybe I guess you technically, you can't make them tear it down, but you can certainly penalize them. But, but you're making me think, so how do we ensure, George, that it's, even if they build it without inspections? But, but you're making me think, so, but how do we ensure, Yuri, that it's, even if they build it without, uh, inspections? Is the safety of it any of our concern?
So what we've done in the past is issued, well, yeah, I mean, it's a tough situation, because most of the time that happens, it is a mobile home that's been put in. Uh, very rarely is there a home built.
A structure.
Completely built without any inspections, so there's a lot of times it's a mobile home. You could have a conditional certificate of occupancy that was put on that, where you note that no inspections were done or that you can't certify to whatever. Uh, we, we have done that, it can come before the commission, I mean, basically it could magistrate court, but you could, you know, in, in the worst sense, uh, force them to remove the structure.
Okay, once again, we're gonna have some conversation with whomever the new chief magistrate charges, I will. In the same sheet of music, alright, we'll bring us back.
Yes, sir.
Will you email this to each of us, please, sir?
Yes, sir.
Cause these papers, once they all get in a bundle.
Sometimes they go home, sometimes they don't.
Mr. Brown, the same thing for you, as we email yours to?
Yes, sir, I'd be glad to.
Alright, alcoholic business license request.
We have a request, I think is probably a change of ownership of Corinthia Lake George Incorporated at sixteen oh four Limerick Road, uh, by Madura Patel. Recommendation from LCPC is approval and same from the sheriff's department based on background.
Alright, that are requirements, ladies and gentlemen. Once again, uh, this is, Mr. Stevens, yours or Max's?
This is Maxine.
Somebody gotta stand in for him then.
I'll make that motion.
We all are standing in.
Alright.
How about that?
Motion over here, can I get us?
Second.
Second, we approve the alcohol license that's presented. Any further discussion? All in favor, show your hands, please.
Board appointment.
Uh-oh.
No, we ready.
No, we ready to go.
It always seemed like y'all had way more board appointment options than we did.
Maybe we need to swap the times.
Man, I don't know, man, it seems like they love it over there every year. And look, they're looking over them right now and, and they're good to go, right?
We ready. I just want to make sure that high louder is working.
Mr. Chairman, we, um, we didn't officially meet, but we did communicate, um, through email and text messages. Mr. Jones, you know, has, um, shift working, but we did, um, make our, um, recommendations. And, um, you know, by majority decision in most cases. And I'll go with the, the first one is the Coastal Regional Commission. And our recommendation is, um, Richard Hayes.
Alright, is that, uh, so I make that, a motion, please?
Chair, I'll make that motion.
Second.
Mr. Richard Hayes be reappointed to the Coastal Commission, I can vouch that he is there and he's engaged.
Yep.
Any further discussion? All in favor, show your hands, please. Hayes, he's appointed, reappointed.
On the Coastal, uh, Worksource Investment Board, our recommendation, looking at my notes here, is, um, David Floyd.
Who was that now?
David Floyd.
David Floyd.
Okay.
Chair, turn the motion.
I make a motion, Mr. Chairman, appoint David Floyd.
Motion to second, David Floyd to the Coastal Works House Investment Board, any further discussion? How, how many seats do we have on that board, do you know?
I don't know, I can, I can double check and find out.
Now, there's a representative from the.
There was just one position available.
Yeah, from the district.
Okay.
I think all the counties in the district have a. All in favor, show your hand, please. Mr. David Floyd's appointed, next one, please.
Coastal and Historical Resources Committee. And we have, um, there's six positions available, but we had, um, four applicants and, um, they all want to be reappointed and that's Ms. Pace, um, Mr. Porter, Ms. Lovett and Baker. Those are our recommendations.
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
And I make, I make that second. Alright, Ms. Pace, Ms. Porter, Ms. Lovett, Ms. Baker, and with two positions to, to be filled.
Right, yeah, we, it was, it was six available, but only four.
I hope people are listening, they will, they will apply, alright. Any further discussion? All in favor, show your hands, please, those four are appointed with two vacancies to be filled.
Okay.
How do we want to approach those vacancies, we want to reab, among ourselves or readvertise, what's the?
We, um, that, those vacancies, we've had those vacancies, uh, for a good while, so maybe we can, if we know of anybody, maybe we can try to recruit, I, I mean, advertising it again and.
I, I mean, we, we could advertise via social media, I mean, on our website, that's technically the same thing now, right?
Yeah.
And I guess if, and if, if we just give them a detail of what it is.
Right, and if, and if, but if you know somebody, just kind of.
Yeah, yeah.
Try to push them in that direction, I, I think that, that works better.
We, we don't mind helping you over here.
Thank you.
You're welcome, alright.
You got, Justin, you got to know at least two people.
They got to know him.
Next one, please.
DeFacts, um, uh, Dos, um, Dawson?
Yeah, it's, um.
What's the first name on that?
Deborah.
Yeah, yeah.
Debbie Dawson.
Yeah, um, that's Joe's wife, Deborah Andrews Dawson.
I'll make a motion that we appoint Ms. Dawson to that.
Second.
The second, we have Mr. Deborah Andrews Dawson for the DeFacts Board appointee, any further discussion? All in favor, show your hand, please. Yay, class of seventy-three.
Alright.
Hospital authority?
Georgia Forestry.
Georgia Forestry.
Georgia Forestry is next, uh, Mr. Chairman, and we have, uh, Mr. Rogers.
Yeah, we got, uh, Harry Rogers.
Yeah, Harry Rogers.
Harry Rogers, okay.
That's our recommendation.
Yes, sir, I'd like to make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
We have Mr. Harry Rogers, so everyone, the Georgia Forestry Board resident in Liberty County.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And the second, by commission, Frasier, any further discussion? All in favor, show your hands, please. Alright, now this is a tricky one now, don't mess this one up.
The library board? That's the one that, that had, um, came back to haunt us a time. We, we, we read it, um, the next one is the, um, hospital.
Right.
Oh, that's the one you was talking about.
That's what I was talking.
Hey, well, I'm, I'm gonna show you how quick we could do that.
Let me see.
Our recommendation is Ms. Kitchens.
Uh, that's it?
Yes, sir.
We got to send them three, huh?
Oh.
We, we.
Has somebody rotated, oh, I'm sorry, no, that's.
I thought it was double them.
They had a vacancy.
Isn't that right, Joe, I thought it was two for one.
We didn't have three.
So submit three, yeah, so submit three names, if you have three names.
We don't have.
No.
They only had.
Yeah.
Only had the one. See, Mr. Brown? I got them, I told them, that was a tricky one.
Yeah, but we, we didn't, um, that's always a tricky one, but you know, we had Ms. Kitchens.
Who, who, um,
And.
Alright, let's, 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 uh, move on that then, uh, somewhat off of that motion.
So, but do we, um, submit all, all three of them? Did, did you have three?
So you only had. If, if you had three applicants.
Well, we, we had, um, Christopher Reed.
Okay, so you had more than one?
Okay.
Mr. Brown, what's? Thought you only had one.
And, um.
What's the new procedure according to the new law?
Three.
Submitting, what's the new regulation on submitting to the hospital authority now?
It's the same, it's the same, you submit, yes, you submit three names.
And, but they must choose one.
Yes.
They must choose one of the three, or reject them and send them back.
Send them back.
And then the.
No, I don't think they can reject them now, they have to choose one.
Didn't know that, but I'll double check.
Yeah, I think, I think they have to choose one of the three that we send them.
It's new law?
Yeah.
Alright, uh, wait a minute, so you have to submit three, we have to send all three names.
Yeah, we're sending all three, um, off of kitchens, Liverpool and, um, Christopher Reed.
Okay, chairman, chairman, you're sending those three names to the hospital there.
Some move, second.
Second. And you said that the, the hospital would select one of those three?
The hospital authority will.
Hospital, okay.
All in favor, show your hands, please. Next one? This one's tricky too, though.
No, this, this one here, um, on the, the library board, we have, um, I can't really pronounce the last name, but it's Kidra Archery. Is our recommendation.
He, what was that, come here?
Chairman, turn the motion for Ms. Archery, best. We apologize if we slaughtered your name, dear. Any further discussion? All in favor, show your hands, please. Um, I, I would like to say this, I hope some of these people are in the ages of twenty and forty.
Or three.
To get a younger people involved in our community, yeah, and some committee work.
Because you're nearly seven.
That's exactly right.
Yeah, um.
I don't know why he likes to pick on people with age.
I didn't know we could say that in an open mic, but, um, okay, alright, um, and the, we, we go with the library board?
Uh-huh, we did.
And then the coastal, Middle Coastal Unified Development Authority. And that's, um.
Who's that? We've never.
Uh, Ms. Grant.
Uh, the feeling.
Byron, Byron Grant?
Bren.
Bren.
Bren, Bren, Bren Grant.
Oh, Bren Grant.
Yeah, Bren. He's, um, New Development Authority CEO.
Yes, and I'd like to make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Alright, motion to have Ms. Bren Grant, sir. Uh, Middle Coastal Unified Development Authority, and second by Commissioner Stevens, any further discussion? All in favor, show your hands, please, Ms. Bren Grant is appointed.
And, uh, Public Facilities Authority, we had, um, had two positions and we, um, Ms. Camper wanted to be reappointed and then we have Ms. Olivera, the, the two applicants.
Two positions, two applicants?
Yes.
I make a motion, Mr. Chairman, we accept both of those.
Is that a second?
Here, you can second.
Yeah, second.
Further discussion? All in favor, show your hands, please. Alright.
Who gets those attendance reports?
You didn't vote, Mary? Mary did, so it was five, five-one. Okay.
My only thing is, uh, people realizing what the requirements of the.
Well, that's the same thing I do, I mean, we go through this process and people just want to get on a board, that's one thing, but, I, I mean, we, we, we are keeping, uh, communications open with attendance and things like that. Uh, that's, you know, when it gets to where we don't have people attending, then we need to basically just either do away with the board or, uh.
Yeah, I've seen that.
Well, you know, in these applications here, it was, um, at least one, uh, one applicant applied for every one of them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, no, it wasn't, it was husband and wife.
Okay.
That was, that's what they were doing.
Okay. Well, hopefully one of them made it. And, um.
I didn't get, I didn't even get a copy of the applicants.
On, on the public, um, facility authority, we got on that, Mr. Chairman.
I just want to make sure people know what they're signing up for.
Nope, no one, um, no one applied for the agent, uh, Mr. Chairman.
I think the agent and, did you see that, Mr. Chairman?
Two applicants.
Yeah, agent service advisory council.
Need two, nobody applied for that one.
But, but see, that one has always been difficult to, uh, fill as well because of the criteria. I think you have to be, what, sixty-five?
No, you gotta be over sixty.
Oh, my bad, five years.
Marion and one and Donald and other.
That's alright, buddy, you right behind me.
Yeah, I appreciate it pretty good, but I tell you something.
Hey, just, look here, let everyone live, just pay attention to the things I do and you'll be better off.
Hey, uh, Mr. Chairman, do, um, Joey, do you know if that's, if this board has had vacancies for, for a while? It has, it really has. That, that sixty, um, sixty-year-old, um, lineup, um, well, stipulation that we got, is that, um, that's something that we did? No, that's under their bylaws. Under their bylaws, okay.
No years ago, David Anderson served, remember Henry Frasier served?
Yeah, I had appointed Reverend Frasier.
Yeah, so we need people. And, uh.
David Anderson moved to Savannah.
Right, he did.
Is it, is it a local?
They meet locally?
They meet, I think, one of the problems is they meet in Brunswick from where I remember.
Oh, yeah, that's a problem.
Isn't it on a Saturday?
That's a problem.
On Saturday.
That's the problem, though, is, even if it is on a Saturday or during the week, going to Brunswick is just. I mean, you're, uh, you know, they, they ought to be able to, to at least show up at all these different areas.
We'll send Justin to talk to him.
I feel one day.
Yeah, tighten that up.
Be somewhere, what do they have, four meetings a year?
Just because it's been done in a certain way for so long. That's called the coastal area action.
Yeah.
Even, isn't it, no?
Cause actually, we meet in Brunswick and we meet in Liberty County, that's, we just rotate our meetings.
Ricky, didn't you just have a birthday last week? That's one.
And, and. Uh, we'll have to, uh.
Keep, I guess, try it again.
Yeah, uh, once again, if you know someone who may be interested, but. And see, I, I, I had a, a lady, she was inter, really interested in, uh, being on that board and she, she works with hospice and everything else, but guess what, she didn't meet, the age. Yeah. Like, I mean.
Nineteen.
Alright, what you got?
Okay, then, uh, the next one, uh, the chairman is the, the rec board and we're gonna, uh, defer to Commissioner Stevens for that, that's a district appointment.
He's been waiting on this one.
We defer Commissioner Stevens for that.
Got the mic.
Mr. Mosley, let's, I make a recommendation of Mr. Artie West in the district also.
Second. You said recommendation, you made, or you made motion?
Oh, that was a motion, I'm sorry.
Motion, okay, and the Commissioner Gillett seconds, Mr. Arthur West, sir, on the recreation board? That's your district appointee recommendation, sir?
Yes, sir.
Uh, any further discussion, Mr. West?
Well, I, I, I know Mr. West, I, I coached him in, um, years ago.
Oh, come on.
I know, I coached him in, in, in rec ball, I, I could see him right now striking out in tee ball with the bases loaded. He was about seven, seven there, but he struck out every time, bases loaded, every time.
And y'all were down by how many?
Every, all they had to do was just hit the ball, it was right there in front of them, but, um, yeah, but.
Mr. West. Mr. West is appointed, alright.
Okay.
That completes your?
Yes, sir, but you, you know, we, we do need to try to, um, recruit, now, it, it was a, a note in here, but that, that's another board.
Oh, oh, yeah.
Is that a Heinzville board?
Phil Odom.
Yeah, from Phil, that, I mean, you know, we, I guess we need to look at all these boards that, that, um, and try to get them filled by, you know, however way we can.
These are county appointments, so, so we need two persons, um, commissioners to serve and to have full assistance about it, they do meet here, you know. So, Joey, if we with others, we're just gonna try to find someone among ourselves, so I guess we can use the same.
The same.
Cause otherwise, it'd be a while before we advertise again, well, yeah.
And we can advertise anytime you get ready.
So, so we'll have these two, if we advertise, and we'll have the aging two and wouldn't there be something else?
It was, um, the, the cultural and historical.
So I guess let's go and advertise those, combine all those together. If we don't get anything after whatever period we decide.
Need go on a recruitment, try to, try to get them, you know, it'd be good to, to have these boards and then just have vacancy year after, year after year. Okay.
That's all I have, Mr. Shepherd. Alright, Mr. Brown, you have anything to?
Just, just to note that we were able to accelerate the budget approval process some and meet some of those deadlines, so your first bu, budget public hearing could schedule for your next mid-month meeting on the sixteenth.
Okay.
At five o'clock.
Repeat time, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Commissioner Stevens, he, he, he was taking my attention, I'm, I'm sorry.
The original budget calendar called for the first budget public hearing to be held in June for your first June meeting and then the approval at the mid-month in June. And when we met last time over the budget, uh, Ms. Richardson expressed the desire to try to accelerate that if, if the advertising time would allow it, and we were able to do that. So your hearing will take place on the sixteenth and then you'll move to adopt your budget the first meeting in June, which will allow her more time to get the new budgets out to the, to the department.
Sixteenth, that's in the next meeting, next Thursday, next Thursday, so. So, do we have a, a update on, because I, I know I didn't make the last, the last, uh, budget? I need to see what was cut and all that. I, I don't have that.
Yeah, yeah, I can make sure.
Clean page.
Yeah, a summary.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think she's, I think she's sent a clean page on one portion, but I'll make sure.
Yeah.
I'll make sure.
We went from red to black right quick.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm okay with that, I, but there's some things that were in the red that need to be in the black.
Yeah.
You know, there were some, some things that, in my opinion, should have been.
Mr. Brown?
Yes, sir.
Been increased, but.
Joey, did we ever finish up the, uh, cleaning up the nine-one-one advisory board list?
We have. You, you and I need to get together, probably if we can schedule a time, maybe next week to get together with Erica?
Okay.
And look at that, that'd be great.
Okay.
Because she and I have already talked about it, and she scrubbed some stuff.
Okay.
Was this yours?
Commissioner Thrive?
Yes, sir, Ms. Chairman, I was just, I know we, um, took the MOU screws on off the, um, agenda tonight for, until we can, till a later date. But I was just, you know, now that the, um, commissioners have gotten their summary of the expenditures that were spent, I, I wanted to see if we could discuss what was our next step. And at the, seeing the summary, you know, I, my recommendation would be that we send it out for a, um, a compliance audit, and let someone else look at it and review it and see, um, if the funds were properly spent or not.
What would be our, uh, resource for that, Mr. Brown?
We would put together a proposal packet and just send it to audit firms that can do, that can do compliance audits.
I mean, I personally don't have, um, the ability, and I don't think any of us had the ability to know that unless some, and that way it takes our hands off of it and, you know, and just have someone else look at it and see. Do you know about how long that would take?
I don't, not without contacting them.
So would that put a freeze on things that they wanted to purchase, like that computer, uh, system?
Yes, sir, I mean, that freeze is kind of there now, because as you know, the state law says that the board of commissioners shall approve expenditures in there, so right now that is on hold. Everything's on hold there, and no more spending of the funds until the board sets those procedures that it wants to set as far as their approval, whether those will come to the board for approval during a meeting, or whether there'll be certain things approved beforehand, but the board hasn't adopted any procedures yet. So, yes, sir, everything would sit still.
Then let's try to get that done, as expeditions as we can, then.
Is that a motion, Commissioner, do we need a motion?
Yes, yes, that is my motion.
I'll second that, the motion.
All right. Commissioner, a second.
I, I think, I think they, they ought to go hand in hand, myself, Mr. Chairman, compliance audit and the, you know, the MOU if they're, if we can get them all done before the end of the year, then that's, we need to have it done.
He'll, he'll, he'll put up the RFPs, I'm not sure what's the busy peak time for doing audits is.
Well, we won't take, I mean, we wouldn't go for a, uh, well, to answer your question, it depends on what that firm's doing and what firms are available to do it.
Right.
The, the desire to do it, I mean, but it won't be a thirty-day advertisement period because those firms, um, are not, there are not that many that would do that.
Okay.
And we'll send those firms that are eligible to do it.
Okay.
You know.
Uh, the cost?
Don't know. Do we, do we send it out?
And, and I, I know y'all know where I'm going with this. The other day, I requested for our summer youth internship program, I requested that, that Mr. Mosley come back so we could be able to have employment for our youth, additional ones. We, I think you told me we had eighteen slots to twenty slots, but those were the only ones that we could afford to have, correct?
Yes, sir.
Because, because of funding.
Yes, sir.
So we're, so you're telling me we can find money for this, but we can't find money for that?
It was placement, it wasn't funding, it was placement.
No, he told me it was.
Well, I think what we said, there, there wasn't enough money in the budget to do it, but he was gonna try to find, like City of Riceburg and those folks who had openings that could do that.
Again, again, and, and I hear that, and what I'm saying is, uh, when we first started that program in twenty sixteen, we had thirty-six kids, and in twenty twenty-four, we're down to eighteen. So I, I hear you, and I hear about placement, and for the city of Riceburg to be able to have twenty-five kids in the city of Riceburg, and we're the county, and we can only host eighteen kids?
What we started off with, Jeff?
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six, okay.
Thirty-six, and now we're down to eighteen. I'm, I'm just saying, and I, I, I sent out an email about it, I, I requested some support with that, but, and, and again, I'm not against whatever my fellow commissioners want to do about an audit or anything like that, but anytime I'm up here fighting for the kids, fighting for economic development, fighting for family entertainment.
Yeah.
It's silence. So, what I'm just saying, you all helped me help y'all. That's the only thing I'm saying. And I mean, we, 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 I don't want to say it because I don't want Peter to get upset with me, but this, this plastic horse that we, we keep melting, I know the Kentucky Derby was the other day, but I don't know. I, and again, I sent out an email about economic, creating this Economic Development Authority for the fifteenth time. Uh, the first time was in twenty twenty-one. I've, I've done everything from a MOU to, uh, to the, down to the detail, in silence. I'm just asking for some help, but if you all want to keep talking about this, we can. But every time y'all bring it up, I'm bringing up economic development and family entertainment. And I'm standing on that.
Keep standing on that.
I promise you, I am. I got a lot of fight left in me, boss.
So, so, Mr. Chair, to answer Commissioner Frasier, we, we increased the slots, make.
From eighteen to twenty?
To twenty-one.
To twenty-one.
And we got, uh, workforce to commit to three, so that'll give us twenty-four, and working with, uh, we're gonna meet with Mayor Stacy to see what he can help us with.
Again, in twenty sixteen, how many did we have? Thirty-six. So we, we're going backwards, that's the only thing I'm saying. I, I don't, I don't see how, I, I don't know. Maybe I'm wrong, but I doubt it.
Are we gonna vote on this, Mr. Chair?
Yep.
Well, I, I would like to, uh, Commissioner Frasier, I think I, I did, at one of the budget hearings, I did tell you that I will work with you on the entertainment portion, you know, you and I just need to get together to, you know, so that I can get a better feel of.
I appreciate it, and, and I got an update about what you, we kind of had a little small discussion about, and I'll update you about that.